All right, we are gonna call this council public forum to session. Today is Wednesday, May seventh, two thousand and twenty five at six o'clock P M. And before we get going, for the record, I want to disclose a potential conflict interest. My husband is a city of St. Helens police officer, not biased. I'm confident I can act objectively in the best interest of the city. And that moves us to number one, presentation on proposed site for police station. And also to mention that we're going to do the presentation first, and then we'll do the public comments. It'll be three minutes per person after we do the presentation. That way, if there's any questions that come up during that, that you'll be able to ask that. So with that, we'll move over to the presentation.
All right, thank you, Mayor. With us today, we have David Lince, which has been our project manager for the construction of our police station. And he's here today to go over the site selection process that we've, you know, the city's. Anybody who's been following this project, this project has moved around a bit. And we're gonna go through and look at all of different sites, the pros and cons about those sites. And that's the evaluation criteria, that how we landed on the property that we're proposing to. It's a public forum, people have the opportunity to comment, comments, and hopefully have answers for it. Take the reins, Dave.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Dave Lince. I'm a senior project manager and project executive at Home Tech. A multi-invested engineering and project management company. I had my own company for fifteen years. I'm an architect, and I have been doing this for almost all clients my whole career. In fact, he has no regrets. So I hire architects and designers, those are the land use process. These projects built and everybody moved in. So the task here was to take a look at the several sites that have been involved in the project. When I came to the job, we were working to build this project on the Castor roadside. Know the history, there were some contentious issues about water and flood plain and so on. So the project got appealed, and we pulled off that site, and now we're looking at several other sites. The combined council and city council asked us to take a look at the Gable Road site. And we went down the road a little bit on that. And then I think sort of re-look at the whole thing. I think the next, the previous slide would be best to go to. So you can see it up there, and I'll explain it to you so you can't see it. But what we have here is a whole list of criteria about how the site would work for the city. And then in each of the commission, the mayors and each of the commissioner and councils columns have a rating for those criteria. And so each, each person rated them, and the total of the rating is two hundred and eighty-eight points for the seventeen seventy-one Columbia site and two hundred and two points for the Gable Road site. So before we go into the matrix, let's go look at each of the sites. If you could just. So the Gable roadside is number four in the far left. And then, there we go. And then the number one site is, of course, the Columbia roadside. Probably all driven by, depending on times. Number two is the existing police station. Number three is the old Castor roadside, which is out of contention. So next slide, please. This is the Columbia site with the, we, we, we got so far on Castor Road that we've designed a building and have that, and this is the look of the building here on this poster here. And we have the drawings for that, so without spending more money, we're gonna reuse those drawings, but we have to put them on a site. So this is those, that particular floor plan in blue situated on the seventeen seventy-one site. And what it would take then for parking and secure parking for police and so on and so forth. Next slide. This is the existing police station site on the right side. This is the, on the left side of the, the makeup of the pieces of ground that are used for that site. On the right side, you can see in green and blue, building floor plan situated in two directions. Blue doesn't work because it pinch here in the corner. You can't see it, pinches in the corner of the site, but the green one would work. But it also needs to involve the parcel in orange to the north or toward Columbia Boulevard. And that would, that would require the purchase of that property. We'll explain that in a second. Next slide. This is the existing sheriff's office. And the parcel of ground that could work is the unused piece in front. And the building is placed on the right side of that slide in blue. Out in front, this site's complication is that yellow dotted line, which is the five hundred year flood plain, which we ran into problems with Castor roadside over that issue. The blue line in the back is the, is the hundred year flood plain, which isn't really involved at all. And this is the Gable roadside with the, with the existing floor plan positioned on it, showing all the secure parking at the. This is back to the south side, probably parking in time, there will be a bunch of excess land that would be be sold or used for other purposes, but it's not a contentious site. Let's go back to the matrix of cost, if you could. I, next, here we go. So we've got a rough estimate for the whole project at eleven point ten million dollars. And what you see here on the top lines, you can see it. The Gable roadside is the next column, and he's, he's calling him green field site, he will find the empty ground. The fourth column is the existing police site. And the last column is the sheriff's site. So we compared them all to try to see how they compare against the Columbia site. So the baseline costs are listed on the Columbia site. The hard cost at top is the construction, professional services, consultants, and so on. And city costs are a whole collection of costs of the architect and, you know, other geotechnics and survey and things like that. The Gable roadside is judged to be more expensive because it requires a longer land use process. Because it's, it requires a stone change, a fire change, there's lots of complications. The new green field site, we assume you think it's quite there, it should be, you know, similar to the old, but you'd say six months after the finish a piece of property up. So there's an inflation there of six percent. And the existing fleet can say sheriff's site would be the same. For a green field site, we've added some dollars, it doesn't have potential, no matter where we are, it'll be happening with the state. Second thing, you potentially run into here because there's extensive rock, there's possible rock excavation and maybe some issues with grade. So you'd have some cotton fills, so there's a little bit of money added for that. On the police site, on the Gable roadside and the police site would both require some demo. But the Gable road estimate has money and all included there, so we had to add some money to that. Professional services are basically the same all the way across, we're only going to remember the same, same proceed cost. The, the existing building, the existing police site is the most complicated of all, if you believe it. Because we have to turn the chat back in the north, and I imagine it's got a building on, and it's not owned by the city. So, but with the new size of the police station, we need more parking, so we'd have to add that on to the, to the site.
I'm glad it's been recently purchased by someone who's now actively rehabbing it, too. I think the likelihood of the city being able to get us probably less now than it was.
Not only is it excuse itself because of cost, that complication itself would, would take it out of running. So the bottom line is the, the Columbia roadside comes out at the lowest possible walls in the city by these red line, red, red margin differences. Nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, Gable roadside, more expensive. Sixty, six hundred and fifty thousand for the, a new green field site, was a rough thing to be on. About two million more for the existing police station because of the things we'd have to do, demo buildings. It needs a new design because the building doesn't really fit on that footprint. I mean, that throws some of the money with some modifications to design, but not fully, you know, brand. That's the five hundred thousand that's there. And then about six hundred and sixty thousand for the sheriff's site, however, it has the flood plain issues, which could be challenged and, you know, there's five hundred year flood plain is, five hundred year line is, is it can happen, we've seen it happen, so contentious site. So bottom line is roughly fifteen eight, which we have, you know, we're, we're budgeting right now, is the, is the Columbia roadside. So the city is engaged in trying to buy that and get us to restart the project. Any other thing you want me to cover there you think of?
Council, any questions?
Does anyone have a question?
Pricing, is that current?
It's, it's slightly four, four or five months old, you know, because we got stopped on Castor. Soon as we got stopped on Castor, we were looking at the Columbia site and the Gable roadside. So, you know, you know, three, four, five months old. But I asked our contractor, which we were, we'd gone through the selection process for a contractor. And so I asked them to update their pricing, and that's why we call it the three point two estimate. Just taking a little bit of time, we'll probably have to polish that. It may have some, some, you know, elevator purchase cost issues, you know. The tariff issues, we're gonna make sure that we use a, a design that is gonna involve probably local materials or at least regional materials. And do the very best we can to hold those costs down in spite of tariffs. And we can beat some of that by, you know, really just working really well with our contractor inside on what's the local material.
So, do you have any thoughts on it? I don't. These are numbers that we've looked at, that we've discussed in great detail. So I'm happy we're sharing it with the public, so. Do you have any additional things to bring up before I open it up?
Yeah, I just, you know, the cost here, and it's always more than when we first talk about it.
It's gonna continue to grow.
It's continue to grow like everything does. But.
You know, key issue about cost, and I'm working with another jurisdiction over a fire station up in Woodland in Welch's. You say, well, why not just wait a bit? Problem is, you, 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 you need your police to support your city in the event of an earthquake. And the existing building cannot take it. So you basically have everybody working on their cars, and it'd be very, very difficult to provide all the protection that you need when the Cascadian subduction earthquake is on its way here. It's supposed to come every three hundred years, and it has for over a thousand years. And the fact is, it's well overdue. So it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. You put it off, you're risking, you have two risks, the prior price and the fact that you, you won't be operating in a station if that happens. This new design is, is to, you know, make sure that that essential facility is standing after subduction earthquake.
One of my concerns is the fact that we've already paid or lost six hundred and eighty-five thousand approximately in armortress fees, and that money has continued to dwindle. So by not building over the last five years, basically, from my understanding, and I'm gonna count on our city administrators, correct me if I'm wrong, that the interest that we earned on the bonds has basically, it's, it's null and void, it's gone. We've wasted six hundred and eighty-five thousand by not building this police department.
Sure.
Correct. Am I correct, or?
Yeah, you're correct. The interest was covering that, or close, close to covering the debt for quite some time, but then just due to the delay in the promises of the bondholders that we had to start giving them, rather than the best ones, that, rather than an interest. It's no longer used to cover the debt.
And the fees, the armortress fees.
Yeah, it's going to the fees.
Right.
So the city's been negotiating with the site owner and this, getting very close to having a deal. And so if there's ever a time to start, it's right now.
Yeah, and I echo.
If there's ever a time to start, it's a year ago.
Yeah, but four years ago, when, yeah, but I echo council. Yeah, I, I echo council, President Shilton, that, you know, we've, we've looked at these numbers. We appreciate you coming a couple of times to talk, but we all collectively felt like it was really important to do this public forum to get feedback from citizens as well that wanted to provide any input, so.
I wanna hear from them. Are you complete with this part?
Okay.
Okay, so, are you good, John?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, um, we are gonna allow time for visitor comments. And this comment period is a central part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes or less to speak. The city council will take into, information into consideration. So when you come up, if you can state your name for the record and keep it three minutes or less, please. And ask questions and make comments as well. So if there's some question that you have.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Well, as usual, Brady, as usual, you were doing things ass backwards. This forum should have been the first thing that you did. We all know, you've already had a special session, you've already made the decision, and you're already trying to buy the property. So why are we here pretending like, oh, ask us questions, we'll make a decision, and we'll take your decisions under? You've made the decision to build it. So the pretending of acting like this is a public forum and you're gonna get in, but is ridiculous. Just say, yeah, we've already made the decision, if you have. You all know that you have, and it's disingenuous to act like you haven't. And it really annoys me. Just tell the truth, be honest, and say, we've made the decision, and we don't give a shit what anyone says. This should have been the first step. This should have been the first step. And the, the act that you're pretending it. Secondly, we can't afford the station. You are sitting there now talking about, oh, lying, literally lying. When I came forward and said, we're gonna have a twenty-five dollar fee on the water bill. No, we don't know where that comes from. I don't know who's spreading that rumor. Well, that rumor's being spread by your finance director because it's in your budget. And actually, it is a lie. It's not gonna be a twenty-five dollar fee. It's gonna be an additional fifty dollars on the ten dollars. So we're gonna add sixty dollars to our water bill. And now you're sitting there talking about building a police station that we can't afford? We simply can't afford it. So to me, this whole thing needs to wait. You need to get your house in order. You need to get your budget in order. We have a nine point three million dollar budget, ninety-three million dollar budget, rather. If you had done just modest, modest cuts, five percent over the last two years, which is why I voted no on the budget two years ago, you'd have almost ten million dollars sitting in a reserve fund. You could have done two or three percent and had money sitting there. Instead, you're now coming to the voters and asking them for a fifty dollar, not quite, it's gonna be a little under fifty, but almost a fifty dollar increase on your water bill in addition to ten. There are a lot of people struggling right now, and you're gonna add, have a sixty dollar bill on your water bill, not for water, pay for a police station that we cannot afford.
Public comments? State your, for the record?
Jenny Gilbert, President. Um, I agree with Brady. This is very disingenuous. It was, seems like it was a public hearing for people to come talk about their thoughts on the police department, and you've clearly already decided. So this is, you know, habitual, at this point, you guys just deciding and not letting the people that elected you make decisions. Um, I'm just gonna tell you right now, I'm not gonna approve finances on this. Um, I think that we need a police department. We needed it seven years ago. Um, I think that we need to make it fit on the property that is existing right now. I think we need to demo that building, put a department on there that fits. We already, water sewer, everything's there, power. Um, and I think that we need to take the rec center and put that as a substation. We could move them over there. It's an additional building, they can grow, and this could all be done like this. We can get it done, stop talking about it. What's happening to the taxpayers and our citizens is shameful at this point. And it's kind of like, let them eat cake, who cares? That's not, that's not how this should be run, okay? Um, obviously, there was really bad planning for years and years, and we're just going to ignore it and ask, you know, the public to pay for your mistakes and the council before your mistakes? I don't think so. Um, I think we need to go with the easiest option, and I know that there's some issues with demoing the building, but I don't see. It's not Walmart. You're not gonna have twenty people come into the police department at a time. The parking, uh, there's already a lot back there. Let's put privacy fencing for the personal vehicles, their, their vehicles, they take them home anyway. They're not gonna be parked there. Um, I know that was possibly sunset clause when we talked to Greenway about that, so maybe they'll be parking the vehicles there again. I don't know. Um, I think that, that, it's a good location. I think Castor Road was better, but I think that's a good location, and I'm, I'm all for having a substation. We'd have somebody on the other side of the highway, we'd have them here, there's room for growth. Five years from now, maybe when we can actually hire officers and can expand, it's gonna be a while. Um, anyway, that's just my thoughts on it. Thank you, guys.
Jennifer Shoemaker. My only question is, in during the city's due diligence, has there been any environmental work done on the site or so that we don't have any environmental surprises?
There's been a phase one analysis. It's actually been two. There was one done a few years ago by the owner, and then we did another one.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online? Any of the, like, comments? They weren't raised in questions, but do we even want?
I mean, at the beginning of this project, we've had a pretty extensive site selection process. There was twenty, twenty-four, twenty-six meetings that we had to evaluate the ten sites that we still down to. Four sites, seventeen seventy-one came out on top of that, that process. It was the number one site out of all of those, those meetings. Council at that time decided to move forward on Castor Road just because of the presumed ease of build and the land cost and things of that nature. The rest of it just kind of spun around.
So we're talking all about professional fees in relation to the design of the building because the current building would not work on where the current police station is, right? So then we would be also looking, how much have we, like, seven hundred and fifty thousand on professional service fees or something?
We, you know, we roughed it up to be about five hundred thousand to modify the existing floor plans that the construction documents are done, ready to permit. But they have to be modified to fit that site as well as purchase the, the site that has just been purchased. So you're gonna have to talk that person out of that thing. I mean, the site doesn't fit the size of building that's needed.
And then the costs associated with moving the police department to another building that's not set up for a police station. So there's just a lot of costs in that plan.
Was there something also with the rec center not being like seismic sound or police station or something of the sort also?
We didn't put some money into this number for, for the relocation of police. Just because they have to, you know, lease something else for, you know, nine months to a year while they're out of the existing station. If you build in a new site, they can stay where they are and then move over without incurring that cost. But that's the four hundred thousand that's in the bottom, on the, on the bottom.
Clarify, when you say rec center, Jenny, you said rec center too, but I think you're referring to the community center on Gable.
Yeah, not, not fair building.
Okay, okay. So initially, way back when, that was my thought too, is that we already own the property. Why don't we just remodel that building? And that came up that, again, there's certain specifications for public safety facilities that it wouldn't meet. It would be, you'd have to demo the building and just start over. And so, um, I don't know, I'm still, I still like that site, but because we've, we already own it.
Been chasing the architecture for this, and like, it's, has to be fit. If it doesn't fit, we can't use it, and we'll throw that money away. We spent a lot of money chasing to make that building fit different places. I've seen it before. It's like you, you're running this horse into the ground, and it's like, what do you have for it? Nothing right now, so maybe we need to look at another way to go.
So also, the, where the current police station is, John, you'll need to correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, but the intent would also be purchasing the property on Columbia. So this, the Columbia site, the property that the current police station was, was on would be sold, and that money then would be paid towards the, this debt for the police station.
That was one of the funding considerations, that sale, that property would go towards, towards a new facility.
Right, so not towards the waterfront, not towards anything, it would go towards the, the actual police station.
Yes.
I just wanna be clear, because.
They've, they've designed this as, it's pretty much the Cadillac for a police station because they do these all around. Same footprint, I think, for other cities and such. It wasn't specific for this city.
Well, it's specific for the needs of the city, the size needed and so on, but it's not, I wouldn't call it a Cadillac. It's, uh, you know, really functional, it'll be an essential facility, so it will be the highest level of need for structurally. But, I mean, we don't have high levels of finishes, and we're using the Department of Corrections for furniture, frankly, which is, is about half the price of buying it from Herman Miller.
Just have some good input.
That's our plan. And they've got great looking furniture, looks for all intent and purpose, just like any high-end, you know, operation.
And the needs that are in the current plan for the, um, police station that we have have been slimmed back for one. And then for two, have been, um, talked about with the police extensively about what their needs are. And if we're going to build a new police station, what are the things we need? And we need, you know, certain spaces for privacy with victims, and we need, you know, places to store very, you know, important, investigative information that is being improperly stored. I mean, even ammunition at this point, you know, like, there are so many issues. It's like, I don't feel like this is a Cadillac. I feel like this is a Chevy.
I think what I was trying to get at was, could, could we cut the building down a little bit? And get some of the, I've seen the plans, some of the back spaces off of it, but, you know, just trying to.
We extensively went through those plans. It seems like there definitely is a, like, it seemed like it wasn't overdone, I suppose, just for like how they maximize the square feet.
Originally, we cut it in half because everybody's going down there.
Their safety building.
Yeah.
And I also, you know, uh, not on the, obviously not an officer, but they're having, um, not like the administration and not everybody in the same building is probably not advantageous, most likely for a police department as well. I, I can't recall if there was other locations that had separation, um, maybe Acting Chief Hogan.
I was gonna say, he's been involved in this process.
They had their individuals, their department separated, and again, that's not a, an advantageous thing for a department. So separating, that's probably not. I don't know if Acting Chief Hogan has anything he wants to fill.
Yeah, that separation, I mean, that was never, the idea is part of, of why administration moved to Castor. But that's where the building was going, and we were gonna be able to kind of monitor it and have meetings with all throughout the process. But that separation was never a long-term goal. In fact, when we were touring a, a bunch of newer police stations around the state, one of the ones we went to had two levels, and they, they mainly talked about that, but yeah, there's the yes versus then.
Or, and all this other stuff and that, yeah.
Right, right. So, yeah, the first renderings, it was, it was municipal court, which greatly changes the parking, all of that. So when it, when it was condensed, yes, it was, I think there was even a, a model of council chambers slash media court, a community room or something like that.
Correct. Yeah, it was taken out. So the building has been squeezed to eliminate those functions.
Right. And some of the things that we found in tours of other stations that we liked were things like the emergency room right off of the front area where people could go in and lock themselves in if they're being chased. Emergency room right off of the front area where people could go in and lock themselves in if they're being chased. Um, that, that's not a, I think it's important to remember if we're looking at square footage, it's, it's not so much the benefit of the staff. Although some of it certainly would be, but many of, of these things that were just weren't really willing to give up once it was pared down. Were, you know, the soft interview rooms, which we don't have. And, uh, areas for the community that, that kind of distinguish it from an outdated, uh, facility to, to a more modern facility. I know when I, when I first started, was involved in some of these meetings where they're just kind of finishing up the designs of the pared back building. And I know then there was thoughts expressed that everything that could be cut out was now cut out, that everything left is, is vital. There are things that are, that were needed.
I just recently toured the Forest, City of Forest Grows Police Facility, and they're looking for a new bond also. And, um, the, the lobby is probably sized for like six people. You could end up with a sexual assault victim in there reporting a crime and having a perpetrator in the same lobby at the same time. So, I mean, that's just completely ridiculous. So you've gotta have a certain amount of space to make sure that things are safe and protected. That, that area of refuge, uh, we put into the City of Lake Oswego City Hall and police station. So that someone in danger can run there and, and run in and lock the doors. And it automatically sets an alarm off, so they've got a safe area of refuge there. So that's designed into this.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I, I remember us talking as well about like the Lincoln City had built a brand new police station and they outgrew it within two years or something. You don't wanna spend all this money for two years down the road, not even being able to fit in it anymore. So we've really got to be conscious about the, the needs and the growth of the city as well.
As far as the sighting goes, I think this is the most, most important site there is, and I've been a proponent of that since many, for years. And I think it's, having an urban police station is very important to see the presence of the police. So I think the site's great. Fortunately, we're, we're gonna, we have to make a decision now that we didn't start this, or I didn't anyway, I wouldn't have heard you. So, it's, um.
Could you bring up the slide of the sites?
I think also for me, I think that it's not necessarily fair to say that, you know, that this is being presented backwards. By trying to get, you know, public comment, because the, the reality is this has been going on for a long time. This, there was ad hoc committees and it chose this site and it hasn't been built. It's sitting here and trying to figure it out as council. I don't think that any of us has come to conclusive decision, and we all collectively agreed that we wanted, we were at a place right now that now we have a site. We had the joint planning commission meeting where we went through that exercise and that we now we're at the point where we're gonna have to make a decision. And I don't think that, I mean, I know for, for me, that I don't necessarily, I, I, I'm definitely leaning in a direction. Cause I think that this is crazy that it's taken us five years and we're losing money, um, on this and we need to build one. But I don't think it's fair to say that this is backwards necessarily. I think there's been co- piece amounts of conversation pertaining to the police station.
I asked to bring the site back up, this, this slide back up, because the number one site, if you can see there, the, the big number on the yellow line is Highway thirty number. But the, you, you, you all probably know where the site is and, and this existing police station is number two. But to, uh, and that's what Commissioner or Councilor Hubbard said, all the police are dispatching from that building. So there's a presence in town of all the, um, police cars moving around. I mean, it's obvious that you've got, you know, some. Constant, uh, assistance and presence there.
The other thing is we focused a lot down here on the waterfront, right? So this would revitalize the whole district as well, having a nice building. We're encouraging tourism and people to come here. And when they come down Columbia Boulevard, they're seeing a nice police station. It kind of sets a precedence, right? That we value public safety.
Yeah.
Then you should also mention that the Columbia Boulevard site is not for sale currently. And you will be leasing it for a number of years. I think it's important that you bring that up, that that property is not of sale. And you will not be buying it. You will be leasing it with an option to purchase in the future.
So we're still negotiating still.
Yeah, we're negotiating with the owner and that is one of the scenarios. We also considered an outright purchase as well.
Let me ask the, a question again. I, I believe you were stating that at the current site, you would need to buy the building next to it for parking? Was that what you said? But not actually for the building?
Right.
And again.
And it just was purchased.
Right, but again, it's not Walmart and they have take home vehicles. I'm not sure how big of a parking lot we would really need. They don't even utilize the back space right now. It's a tow yard. Um, and then as far as the size go, I mean, substations, lots of cities have substations and you would have. I've been in the community center. It's, it's big. I don't know, I don't know what, if you can bring it up to Twitter, that's a good issue. But, um, there's storage there. Um, armories aren't huge. They're the size, very, very nice walk-in closet. Um, I, you know, I just, and if we're not gonna own the land, plus there's probably a demo over there as well.
Correct.
Um, so there's costs of that as well.
Yeah, the demos of, of the, of the seventeen seventy-one site is included in the price. As we added this site to this list of evaluation, we had to add the fact that we had demoed that.
Own, we would own this land as well at Columbia.
Are there any parking requirements for this building that we're not thinking of as far as planning? Or, I mean, that we, that we have considered?
The architect had, you know, who had the slide, um, the architect has considered the parking needed there based on the code. And that's what they've come up with and then they, and it involves, you know, buying that other land or using it. Oh, that's about the, um, existing site.
Down one more, Chris.
Just, just there.
Right there.
So I know we, we don't own the far north one. Don't own all of the rest of it either, do we, John?
For the audience, if you can see the extension of the orange line out to the right, bring it all the way back to the, um, to the left side of the site. That odd trapezoidal piece is the piece we're talking about. Building out, you can see it shaded in, you know, light.
We don't own the one right under that either.
We own this, John?
Jacob is very, very familiar with that, so.
Yeah, the, the ownership is a little wacky. Um, and I can't remember that, this is something that, and I don't know if. When they were recording deeds, uh, someone just didn't know what they were doing.
There's something with the fire.
Yeah, there's some weird, and I don't remember exactly, but it's like, this is owned by the district and this is owned by the city. So there's, there's a little bit of that cleanup. Uh, this was recently purchased by, um, Northwest Plumbing, uh, SASS. Um, and just put on the parking, I wo- would mention in the whole business district here, budding on street parking does count. And, um, a whole lot of street there for parking. I, I, and I don't, you know, it's been a while since we had these discussions. I don't know, I know we've talked about those rules with the consultants. I'm not sure how much the on-street parking was considered in this case for, for meeting the parking requirement.
It isn't secured parking for sure.
Yeah, it's not secured. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah.
With visitors.
And the upper parking lot was going to be secured? This one in question was slated to be a secure parking lot? It looks like public to me.
Yeah, we didn't get that far.
It says public parking on it.
Just why I was thinking about that.
Scenarios all changed with the purchase of that property.
I would think secure would be behind the building.
Yeah, the site to the east and the site to the south are, are the candidates for secure. They're closer to the building.
Which even if we eliminate this from the question and talk about on-street parking, there, there's still a considerable amount of dilemmas. Inside of this area, especially with not even knowing.
Well, the building, building that's there has to be taken count, taken down, so we have to relocate. Um, we have to change the design of the building, so we have to add another five hundred thousand dollars to the cost of, of it, uh, there. And the, you know, the construction cost is still the same. It's, it's actually higher.
Um. Question, have we done any like environmental studies on the current police station? Is there asbestos in there that's gonna also impact or any, would impact demolition? I mean, that building's been.
Not in my purview, but I don't doubt for a minute that there's asbestos in there in, in terms of asbestos mastic or ceiling tile.
That's gonna be another, that would be another cost.
What was it, Bill? The bill in the seventies probably got lead paint.
That may be something.
Well, I mean, those are just things, those aren't Herculean problems. Any building, even the seventeen seventy-one building has to have. What we call hazmat studied into it. It's just a matter of how they're gonna bag it up and get it out of there before we tear the building down. So that, that's sort of parody with the seventy-seven one site, that kind of interior stuff. Now, there's a leaking water, uh, uh, oil tank or something there. I don't know about that. We haven't talked.
Under the ground, which. Very well.
That is not the case at seventy-seventy-one. That's been studied and that's not the case.
Do you think it's a terrible idea to have a parking lot front-facing Columbia Boulevard for the city as, as opposed to a front-facing business?
Yes.
That would be problematic with choosing this location too, right? Cause then we would have to move the building. So what would be the point? It would be like starting in a green spot.
Um, it's, it's that.
Why would you need a parking lot that big? That's a huge, I don't understand that. They don't even, the cars aren't even there. I mean, when they're, they're on duty, I mean, unless we're gonna get rid of the take-home program. Um, I don't understand why you need a parking lot that large and we do, there's plenty of parking on the street.
On the seven seventy-one site, there's secured parking in the back though, correct?
And the building's forward facing.
Yes, it's on Columbia.
Well, we need. A question about the, that, that site. How are they gonna get, like, they would have to go across traffic. Like, right now, they can just get out and get in. They'd have to, like, wouldn't you have to do two steps to get out? To get onto St. Helms Boulevard?
Could you bring up the seventeen seventy-one site?
I mean, are we looking at a light or something?
I think it's probably gonna be coming out onto, I don't know the number.
Eighteen?
Yeah, that's it.
See.
And then there's a light there on Columbia right there.
Yeah, couldn't be a better spot.
In the upper left corner of the orange site. So come out, go to a light, take off or a little south and, you know, east on Calitz. Or come around on seventeen to go right up Columbia.
But as far as our rules are concerned, Columbia Boulevard would be the last street that we would want a driveway approach on. Of all four of those, that would, that would be the last.
That's why I didn't even bring it up. Cause I'm, you know, because it's so busy that it, it, you'd come on thirteenth or seventeenth or Calitz. Depending on how our circulation and the, oh, oh, and the site does slope to the south. But then so does the lot, so. All commissioners and counselors voted for the seventeen seventy-one site by eighty points out of two hundred and eighty.
And any other?
And, and you said, John, that it came to the top of the list after twenty, twenty meetings?
There was over twenty meetings with the evaluation committee and.
All things considered. And it's central to town today.
There are no other, uh, questions, comments? All right, well, we will adjourn this, uh, public hearing at six forty-three P M.